The zoning board review is now in session. It's nice to meet you. This is a special meeting for the, it's the third hearing for the AP Enterprise petitions. You can especially use permit to put an outdoor volleyball recreational facility in what is known as the old Island Park landfill, which is Tax Assessor's Map 2025, lots one, three, thirteen slash two, which is commercial and residential. So we left off going through a butters and interested parties. And the last person to speak was Chris Barr. So that being said, who would like to speak that has not spoken? Ma'am, you want to come up?
Okay. Thanks for taking me first because I got to pick up my grand.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Full name and address for Heather.
Linda St. Laurent, one sixty-four Riverside Street in Island Park.
Hey, Ms. St. Laurent.
Okay, I just have to get my glasses on. I'm going to be reading from this.
Okay.
It's brief. My name is Linda St. Laurent of one sixty-four Riverside Street. A local and international artist, retired teacher's assistants, a widow, a mother, and a grandmother. Our family has resided at this address since nineteen forty. It's a generational area for me. I want to address some facts of the quest of AL Enterprise and the facts and how it will forever alter and not for the good, the serenity of Island Park as I know it and my neighbors know it. I have seen wonderful changes over the years, such as good restaurants that have enhanced the daily lives of the community in our area. Nothing that interfered negatively with the daily lives of the residents or the children in this area. I respectfully understand the huge responsibility of the zoning board. I don't take it lightly. And the fellows who will determine the fate of the Homestead families whose only home is in Island Park. Those who have this area as their primary residence. I ask each of you to respectfully understand that this is not just a location on the map. It is a special. If the special permit is granted to AL Enterprise, our lives in this area as we know it and our children, the peaceful serenity and harmony will be forever altered into chaos. YI basis, here are some of the facts. AL Enterprise proposed uncertainty of who will lease venue after it's built. Uncertainty of how many patrons will be allowed, expressing only that ninety-five to a hundred parking spaces would be provided. And off-street parking would be necessary. That would include special event venues that could bring up to five hundred patrons. That means our neighborhood is going to be infiltrated. Trash will be the responsibility of the patron. This facility is a street away from Portsmouth's newly renovated children's playground, straight away. This will go on day in and day out, seven days a week, nine months out of the year, from March to November, eleven hours a day from seven AM till eight PM. It will interfere with the school bus schedules as buses run from seven AM to four PM. Children will or are threatened to be late to and from school. Parents are threatened not only with their children's school schedules being interfered, but the traffic will interfere from us getting to and from our homes for work and just even going to the grocery store. There are many negatives I could spend time bringing to light, but I'm going to end my conversation. I think you've heard quite a bit. I try to approach this on the facts of the daily lives of the people in Island Park as we know it. It's a serenity-filled place, and this office is nothing beneficial for any resident in Island Park. It will only benefit the man who wants to put his dream in action in our neighborhood. And I ask this council to vote no to the special permit and ask this man to find another neighborhood to build his dream.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Full name and address for Heather, please.
David Mark Chitowsky, one oh five Walnut Street, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. C A J T O W S K Y. Thank you for, I'm going to read this. I submitted this letter on October second to the town of Portsmouth zoning board review. By learning important life skills through the exciting sport of volleyball, the youth of Portsmouth will benefit greatly from the volleyball courts proposed by AP Enterprises. The volleyball games that the youth of Portsmouth will participate in will teach them the importance of teamwork and how to communicate clearly. These are very important life skills that will enable them to successfully overcome future challenges. For this reason, I asked the Portsmouth zoning board of review to approve AP Enterprises' special use permit to create an outdoor recreation facility. Your approval will enable this unique project to move ahead and help the youth of Portsmouth learn very important life skills through the safe and exciting sport of volleyball. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skowski. So I won't need to read your letter into the record then, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Next. Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Full name.
John Barry, B A R R Y.
Hey, Mr. Barry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. One zero five Walnut Street. Since Dave Jatauski just went, I figured I'd do the same. One oh five Walnut may ring a bell. It is also owned by AP Enterprises. David and I are tenants of AP Enterprises and Art Palmer. My girlfriend and I have lived at one oh five Walnut for the past eight years. That was during a lot of the work that was being done in the fields behind us. We've raised two kids there who are now in college. We've never been disturbed. We're right on the property. We've never been disturbed by any noise from trucks or commotion as, as it's mainly, as it's.
Excuse me a minute. You know, I asked nicely the first couple of meetings and everybody was good. I kind of figured I wouldn't have to ask tonight. Sir, sir, I'm not even going to listen to you. Listen, if I hear one more thing out of you, I'm going to ask you to leave. If one more thing, you're out and that's it. You had your opportunity to speak already. Continue.
Thank you. As I said, we've never been disturbed by any noise or from trucks or commotion in the fields behind us. It's mainly closer to Park Avenue. It's almost like a storefront on Park Avenue that has volleyball courts. Volleyball players, a lot like golfers or tennis players, are people who are invested in their sport. They don't tend to be ruckus makers. They're not bring a keg, turn up the music and be rowdy type of people. For that reason, I'm not worried about any noise or commotion coming from the area. I mean, isn't, isn't this what businesses in the area would want? People who spend hours sweating, that maybe spend some more money at one of our incredible Island Park restaurants afterward. I do not have the experience, obviously, to talk about any of the environmental or traffic disputes that have been raised. But again, I've been living there for the past eight years with AP Enterprises and Art Palmer as my landlord. So I'm definitely qualified to provide a uniquely astute character reference for both the man and the business. For a period of time, and I'm not going to go into detail, I was going through a little bit of a rough spot. Wasn't particularly the best tenant that Art and AP Enterprises probably wanted. If it were me in Art's position, I may have terminated my lease. Art did not do that. Art approached me. He talked with me. He sat down calmly, rationally, and coolly. And we had a very involved conversations about issues that I was having and ways that we could rectify them to make our situation together better. I gave him ample ammo to terminate my lease. Because we were able to work out the issues, everything has been very cool and calm at the residence. Art and I have become, I would like to think, pretty good friends. Since that time, I've gotten to know him very well, and I can say that if he approaches this business as he has the business of being a landlord, he's going to be very attentive, easy to work with, and easy to work through any issues with. I'm not a volleyball player, but I'm all for anyone who wants to bear themselves through sport and exercise and team building. And I'm definitely in favor of AP Enterprises' building, owning, and operating the volleyball courts on Park Avenue. This is a labor of love for Art. It's not a moneymaker. I think he's probably already spent a ton of money trying to build it. I don't see it as a moneymaker. This is definitely a labor of love. And I also see this as nothing but a win for the, for Island Park and its residents. If you'd allow me, I'd just like to read an excerpt from another letter from somebody who was in favor of the volleyball courts.
I have any letters that were addressed to the board, I have them. If it wasn't sent to the board, then.
All right. Just for the record, it's one little paragraph. Nope. Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next. I guess it's you.
I do.
Swear to tell the truth, you do.
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Laura Korea Rogers, one twelve Highland Avenue. I live two doors down from one oh five Walnut or wherever he said. And I heard the trucks constantly, so I don't know. Maybe he can't hear good. Anyway, I did sign a petition for the PCC, make the note that I am opposed of the so-called volleyball on top of the bad soil. I don't trust Mr. Palmer's actions as he has not capped the dump yet. It's been ten years, ten whole years of dirt flying around. Why would you trust what he says? Speaking of people living in Island Park, T-ball was removed after we questioned the town of the kids playing in the park, rolling around the ground and picking up the ball and licking their hands. That was, they were playing there for years. It got moved out because of all the dirt blowing around. Also, my daughter lived there. She didn't want to live there anymore because of the dirt. It was, had to be fifteen feet high across the street from my house. It was blowing on, on the cars, the windows, the swing sets. She moved away because of Mr. Palmer. They are saying there's two feet of sand. Do they play barefoot in the sand? And who's going to be responsible if somebody gets an infection? I mean, I don't know what kind of sand they use. And speaking of health, how many people have developed cancer in our neighborhood? I know seven in the surrounding neighborhood. Whether it's from that, I don't know. And won't the kids just go in there and play like a big sandbox? I mean, and what about the hurricanes? And what about the temporary trailers? How do you put trailers without scraping that bad dirt to make the land even again? How do you put a volleyball court on it without disrupting all that bad dirt? And I thought you couldn't put trailers in Island Park unless it was grandfathered in. I mean, I do live in a trailer.
They're office container things, not mobile homes.
I believe later, once he gets his vote, he'll, he'll change it. Like, once he gets his foot in the door, I believe it's going to be pickleball next. That's the number one sport around here. Pickleball. I mean, he's already changed his thing so many times. I think Portsmouth should say no. We have volleyball at the Glen. Will the beach go as park in the parking lot? There's only a hundred spaces. I mean, it's busy down there. I can hardly get out on Mason Avenue because they parked on both sides and the streets go one way because we never had that bridge over there. They go that way. So to pull in, you got to go all the way around to get in. Never mind the buses. The buses can hardly move down there. We just don't need more traffic. And who's to say that they won't bring in the bullhorn, speakers, music, et cetera? Sometimes, you know, when the wind blows, you can hear the football games and the band playing from the high school. I mean, you can hear everything. It's quiet down there. We liked it quiet. And yes, it will be a great sledding area for the kids. And Mason Avenue has so many ruts from the runoff. Right now, you can hardly go down that street, and they will park on that Mason Avenue on both sides. And don't you need a police present if it's more than a hundred people? I'm not really sure what the rules are in Portsmouth. You don't, three hundred people? I just was wondering how they were going to grate that bad dirt for a parking lot and the trailers. Anyway, quiet Island Park does not need this. You have disrupted our lives the last ten years. Ten years they've been going at it, and it's still not capped. And I would like for you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did leave a cup here last time. Did you see it? I'm just thinking.
What did it look like? Did it say Island Park on it? Why am I, Ms. Rogers, why am I not surprised it has a Portuguese cup? Yes, ma'am. Come right up. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Donald LaFleur, twenty-four Cedar Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, lifelong resident of Island Park. Okay. I'm here tonight to oppose the sand volleyball courts on the site of the Old Town Dump. First, I don't see the need for this since the town already paid seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for two sand volleyball courts at the Glen. Wouldn't the town and taxpayers want people to utilize the courts they already paid for? Wrongplex and Tivity has courts as well. How many courts do we really need? It was published on seven nineteen, twenty twenty-three in the East Bay Rhode Island paper that the town of Portsmouth Parks and Recreation already measures up on outdoor facilities. Second, Island Park is already a very congested area during the summer months. We currently have nine restaurants and bars, five businesses, two marinas, and two beaches that do not charge a fee. They're all very busy, all of which use Park Avenue for overload parking when there are lots of folk. Park Avenue many times will be lined with park cars on both sides, all the way down to the area of the Old Town Dump. You must be very careful driving down to watch for pedestrians, including children in between cars, car doors opening, and people wanting to cross the street. Having any additional traffic coming out of this area on Park Avenue will only exacerbate the situation even more to the point that it isn't safe. I can already see a stoplight on Park Avenue, and I would hate to see that. The next thing is more people, more litter, more noise. Sometimes I feel like we're being invaded in Island Park. Island Park businesses are doing very well, and we do not need any more people there. Residents in Island Park already put up with enough traffic and people and trash since they took the trash away, the trash barrels away. That is not working out either, but that is another problem we have down there. As for the courts, the sand is a big issue. For one, it will be blown all over. We have a south wind coming straight up the river that is normally ten to fifteen miles an hour each afternoon. Other days, it can be up to twenty miles an hour. And then there are nor'easters and hurricanes. At fifteen miles an hour, that can blow sand in someone's eyes. It can topple beach umbrellas and blow trash all around. I have read that above fifteen miles an hour would be difficult to even play volleyball in those conditions. Another concern is injuries associated with the sand volleyball. Ankle and foot sprains, hand and finger sprains, collisions between players leading to concussions and even broken bones. This will have an impact on our town first responders and ambulances. Every time an ambulance is called out, a huge fire truck is dispatched as well. All of this costs taxpayer money and puts a strain on our resources. From my understanding, there will not be any trained coaches, trainers, or certified EMTs on site. Will they have liability insurance for these injuries? Will the town be liable as well? I'm not quite sure why we're talking about this as the DEM and CRMC coastal resources need to approve this as well. My understanding is they already have violations covered. This property lies right next to Founder's Brook and natural wetlands that is home to many species of birds and other wildlife. This is a concern that the wildlife habitat will be disturbed, not to mention the people who live nearby. I also feel this is only a stepping stone to get something on this property for other things to come down the road, and this will start all over again. For these reasons and many more, I respectfully ask the board not to approve this site for sand volleyball courts. The area shouldn't be made free of any construction to preserve the wildlife habitat there. Thank you very much. I have.
You can give it right to Aaron over there. He'll put it in the record. Thank you. Thanks. Next. Yes, sir. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address.
Kyle Lloyd, L L O Y D, one four zero seven Gardner's Nick Road, Swansea, Massachusetts.
I would like to speak out tonight in favor of the proposed beach volleyball facility. I speak tonight as someone that has thirty years' experience as a player and now also as a parent of youth volleyball players. We have played and competed at many facilities and beaches along the East Coast. I feel compelled to speak tonight to offer a viewpoint as a person that has seen facilities like the one being proposed here and speak about my firsthand experience with some of the concerns that have been raised. The first point I would like to discuss is the relationship of volleyball facilities in direct proximity to residential areas. An earlier witness testified that there were no such facilities in our area to use as a comparison. My son and I play every Sunday morning in a facility in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, where the sand courts are immediately adjacent to neighbors' properties. In the ten years I've been playing there, we have never had a complaint from a neighbor. My son also competes in tournaments at a facility in Charlton, Massachusetts, which is boarded by residential properties. The facility looks very much like the one being proposed here. It's purpose-built for volleyball, and it has roughly a dozen courts. During a visit to the facility, we have not observed or did not observe any of the negative effects on the neighborhood that are being debated here. With respect to traffic generation, I have not observed traffic as an issue at any of the events we have attended. Most tournaments, which seem to have the largest census of people at one time at the facility, are run by a handful of event organizers, usually volunteers, with limited capacity to check in everyone and get plays started. For that reason, the start times are usually, for different divisions, staggered because there are only a few people checking everyone in, and they don't want a slew of people converging on the sign and table. I've also heard the concern raised about potential for large group of spectators. I think somebody mentioned earlier. It's not a huge bring a keg type of event. Volleyball is heavily specked, is not a heavily spectated sport. In the thirty years of playing, I have never gone to an event simply to watch. It's always to play. The only time I've ever gone to an event is to watch my children, in which case I've driven them there, which is why I'm the spectator. And not increasing the vehicle count for that facility because the player went with the parent. With respect to noise generation, competitive volley community, volleyball community is not a rowdy group of bar patrons. We're a group of serious athletes competing in a rigorous sport. While I can't say that people don't cheer a great play or celebrate a hard-fought victory, it's not an unruly mob, as some might suggest. The events we have, excuse me, the events we have been to are largely volunteer-run, and the event organizers are so grateful to have the venue that they and the community at large, us, leave the venue cleaner than we found it before the day started. We have so few places to play, we cherish each of them for fear that we may lose the chance to keep playing at them if we don't take care of them. In closing, I believe the proposed facility use, excuse me, is a use that will be very benign in its impact on the area. It will provide people with access to recreation, opportunities for physical activity, and will educate people about the fastest-growing sport in the country. Some might even say that this facility will be an asset to the town. While you may think that it is easy for me to say that because it will not be in my backyard, I live in the shadow of Brayton Point in Swansea, and I'd welcome this use over the four-hundred-foot-tall industrial tower facility that is being proposed in my backyard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Take your time. Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address.
Ronald de Blois, one oh nine Cottage Ave. And I've lived at that address for about forty-eight years, believe it or not. Could I pass out a little piece of paper for you guys?
Sure, I can. Is this what you're going to read? Okay, so we'll mark this. Butters exhibit.
My problem with this project
Butters exhibit.
is that they're going to put two feet of sand on top of a mound that's already six feet high. I don't know where these guys have been playing their volleyball, but I don't think it's eight feet above a neighborhood. Now, the sand is going to sit up there for twelve months a year. And we all know about the wind and the direction and all of that. The neighbors have already endured ten years of this fill, which now they put a stone road in. They should have put it in ten years ago so we didn't have to deal with the trucks and the mud and everything that they put us through. And then the mound is not done. The mound, we deserve a vegetated mound up there where the wind does not blow anything off of it. That's the idea of vegetation, is to hold this mound together. We're going to cap it. First, we're letting them off the hook because they can't get anything to grow up there. There's a few weeds. There's a mound of dirt up there that sticks up about twelve feet right now. They're not trying to appease the neighbors. The sand is going to blow everywhere. There's no way to keep sand still. The only way to keep that mound in place is to put vegetation on there. That's what it calls for. That's what the whole deal was. First, they made gazillion dollars by dumping down there. Who, who made all the money? The town paid to dump down there. I'm sure that the land made money then. Now it's made money because I'm sure these trucks that came in and out paid to dump. And we all know there's questionable dirt there. And now, without capping it, and it also stipulates that they can't touch the land for a year after they cap it completely and, and get, you know, an okay.
Unless they go back for a modification, which they're allowed to do.
Modification?
The state.
What about finishing the project that they've put us through over ten years now? Let's get a finished mound with vegetation all the way when we're not getting dust blown and then come to us and try to put something foolish up there. I think they should give it back to nature. That should be nothing but nature down there. That's how it started out. That's part of Founder's Brook.
That's to, to give them. Till all of our fathers turned it into a land.
You know, and so why should we? That was the first mistake. Second mistake was putting six feet of lousy soil on. And now the third mistake is going to be putting silica sand up there to blow at our trailers and houses and cars. And when silica sand breaks up, it causes problems. You got to do is do the reading. But thank you for listening to me. I get animated. I'm sorry.
Okay, don't worry about it. Yes, sir, in the back. Yes, sir, in the back. Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth.
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Tom Greed, one ten Thayer Drive.
Hey, Mr. Greed.
It was brought up earlier during this hearing that APE had previously told DEM it would not be pursuing the volleyball plan. The board told that speaker that APE had the right to change his mind about what it does with the property. As you deliberate on this special use permit, please remember that point. I personally doubt the proposed business model will work. We have two virtually unused beach volleyball courts at the Glen. I've never seen volleyball being played on the beach across the street from the venue we're discussing. Or on any other town beach for that matter. There does not seem to be a pent-up demand for more volleyball courts here. So APA APE may have misread the market and need to change their mind again. APE might might even decide to sell this property. Then the special use permit would pass to whoever buys the property. The reason I bring this up is that APE states, and I am quoting from APE's Revised Operations Plan dated July seventh. For licensed special events that that draw spectators above five hundred persons. Traffic impacts, if any, will be addressed via entertainment license conditions, including but not limited to police details, unquote. I'm sure the board understands that above five hundred persons is essentially an unlimited number. Events with over a thousand people could certainly be licensed under this special use permit. But eh but what about events with just under five hundred people? They are clearly envisioned in the operations plan as being permitted without a license. The proposed special use permit neither regulates the number of these special events, nor requires them to be linked in any way to beach sports. Therefore, if you provide this permit, I'm not saying you should, I'm just looking at that alternative. Then with the permit, APE could change their mind to another business model. Or sell the property and any number of non-sports-related special events with up to five hundred people would be possible without further permitting. And who knows what larger events might be licensed. During this special use permit hearing, not much has been said about this part of APE's Revised Operations Plan. The traffic study certainly did not address it. Yet there is this hidden critical part of the application that you are being asked to approve. One thing that Mr. Palmer did admit under questioning was that he envisioned renting out this venue. Since Jimmy Buffett put Portsmouth and Island Park on the map, who knows what sort of events his renters or new buyer might contemplate. I urge you not to pass this special use permit. The business model does not seem to be well thought out. And in my estimation, the permit does not adequately protect the neighbor's quality of life from large events held in this densely populated, residentially zoned part of Portsmouth.
Mr. Greb, for the record, if you understand anything about a special use permit and anything about a zoning board, what an applicant applies for and what the board grants are not necessarily the same thing. The board has the right to impose any condition we want. The board can impose a condition that says you can't have any more than two people down there if we want. So if it were to be approved, it doesn't mean it's carton launch, five hundred people or better. The board could take remedies to reduce that if they so choose.
I fully understand that, Mr. Knott. That is not what is on the table. If you choose to do that, fine. But the 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 caution that I am giving you prevails.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth.
Yes, I do.
Full name and address for having.
Genie Smith, thirty-nine Morgan Street. Island Park.
Mrs. Smith, you can pull that down if you like. Thank you.
All I wanna say is all the volleyball players that have spoken here, they must have been Eagle Scouts because all they say is they make no noise, they pick up their trash, they never have incidents. They're good guys. When I first moved here almost twenty years ago, I was standing in my yard and all of a sudden I heard a loudspeaker Blair. My husband informed me, that's just Flo's letting people know that their food is ready. I said, really? Is that what they do? Um. That lean is ten feet higher than Flo's. You stated yourself, Mr. Knott, with the prevailing wilns winds in Island Park that everything comes this way. We, if they think they will make no noise and we will never hear them, nah, I don't think so. The third thing, no lighting, no permanent structures, no traffic problems. Many contrary statements have been made by them. No staffing, no anything. Can they honestly say that the health, safety and welfare of this community will be protected? That's all I ask. This does not meet the requirements for special use permit. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is Paul Kelly, thirty-three Pine Street. Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Hey, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, I won't be getting any applause tonight. Um, all right, so I've lived Pine Street, which is a couple hundred feet away from where the proposed volleyball courts are gonna be. For twenty-seven years, before that, I lived on Island Ave. Before that, I lived on Cedar Ave. I grew up on Bike and Drive. My parents still live on Bike and Drive. I went to Hathaway School. I went to middle school, Portsmouth Middle School. I graduate from Portsmouth High School. So I've been around for a long time. When I was growing up in Island Park, there was things for people to do. We had, I can remember having variety stores, five-and-dime bowling alley, movie theater, aquarium. You know, it was it was a fun place to be. It was a fun place to grow up. You know, I raised my kids in Island Park. My my children are grown adults now. Um. When they were growing up, they had the beach and the playground. I live right on the corner of Pine Street and Omerod, so we're not far from either one of those. I was also the vice president of the Island Park Playground and Neighborhood Watch Association at one point. Which uh dissolved because of a controversy similar to this. Where they we wanted to put a skate park, you know, some of us wanted to put a skate park in. And a a group was very opposed to the skate park. And it basically divided the neighborhood, broke up the association. And um I I don't think that was a good idea. I I think that the kids should have had the skate park. I was opposed to that. I was asked to sign a petition. I said, no. I don't wanna get any more letters from the PCC in my mailbox either. Tired of that. You know, I think this guy should be able to do what he wants on his property. He's not bothering me. Okay? I've been I've been living there a long time. It doesn't bother me. I want this board to do the right thing and grant this permit to this guy. He doesn't seem, I don't know. But he he doesn't seem to be a bad guy, right? He and um I don't think he's trying to get rich off of this thing, you know? I don't think, I really don't. Uh he's not looking to get filthy rich off of volleyball courts. Right? He's already filthy rich. He doesn't need that to get.
Mr. Kelly, is there anything else you wanna add other than you're in favor of it?
Uh. I'm a bus monitor.
Uh that's irrelevant.
Is it? Well, I, we don't need more houses in Island Park.
Okay.
The bus is already full enough, all right? I'm I'm the one that does.
Houses are not proposed right now, so you obviously have stated you're in favor of it.
I am.
Is there anything else directly related to the petition you wanna add?
Well, just say I'm very close neighbor and it's never no- nothing that's going on there has bothered me. And I'm in favor of it. And thank you for letting me share a few thoughts.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. You'll be next, sir. Swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Full name and address for.
Jack Delante, D E L E H A N T Y. Uh ninety-eight Mealy Terrace in Portsmouth.
Yes, sir.
Uh I'm here to lend my support to uh this special use permit. Um I think this would be very beneficial to the Portsmouth community and the Newport area volleyball community specifically. Um I grew up in New York, but I came to Roger Williams to play volleyball. And I stayed here largely because of how strong uh the volleyball community is here. Um. And as as you've heard, the last few years, due to changes from the Atlantic Beach Club selling to beaches in uh Newport and Middletown changing their policies, the opportunity to play uh during the week pickup games is largely gone. Um. I know Portsmouth does have the courts at the Glen, but they're used by a private group most nights of the week during the summer. It's really not an option for uh pickup volleyball. So having a spot where the community could come together and play would be highly beneficial. Um I've got three daughters in the Portsmouth schools, starting to show an interest in sports and volleyball. Um I'd love it if there was a place like this for them to play when they got older. Um. And I'd like to echo the thoughts that Mr. Lloyd had. Um volleyball community is very respectful. Uh we we clean up our courts at tournaments at the beach. Um not loud. The number of spectators that come to watch is really minimal. Volleyball is just not one of those sports that your whole extended family comes to watch. Um so with that, I I think that the benefits this facility would have um are great and that the the board should approve this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Almond St. Laurent. Twelve Liberty Street. I've been I've been a resident in Portsmouth for forty-seven years. I lived in Island Park all that time. I feel like this is our neighborhood. Our neighborhood. What we what we want, we look, I feel like Island Park to me is a paradise. I was a shell fishing for uh shell fisherman for twenty-seven years. I loved coming home. Which were cool in the summer, warm in the winter. To let this go through. He already dumped the hazardous waste. I'm not gonna get into an argument with what was there, but it was. He made money on that. Now the volleyball. I don't have any problem with volleyball. I played volleyball. But not in my neighborhood. And the reason why is anybody's been down on Park Avenue on a Saturday and Sunday. Just the people that come from Massachusetts and and fellow uh islanders that come down there. The place is packed. You get the volleyball court in there. We have two lanes, one going one way, one going the other. The Glen on a Saturday after the the games. Two lanes each way, the police officers there to let the cars in and out. Spectators come for the volleyball. There's gonna be more traffic. Oh, they can go swimming up, they can go swimming right across the street where they're gonna park their cars on Park Avenue. One uh one person said about the about going down Park Avenue in the summertime. You gotta go slow, and I mean slow because you don't know if a child is gonna run across the road. Uh. I can go on and on. But the fact is, is when we petitioned against the uh the landfill, we lost. I don't think any of you got, you gentlemen ladies were here at the time.
Yeah.
You were.
Looked here longer than you, sir.
No, no, but I mean uh on the board.
No, I was not on the board. But I remember down there.
Okay.
Not too well.
But they passed it. And we were up up and we had a better crowd than this. And I'll tell you why they're so small. I hear people and then my neighbors say, what are you gonna do? They they're gonna do what they want. That's why there's is not that many people here because they have no no faith on the board. And I say differently. The way you've been conducting this hearings for the last, this is the third time, I thought was fantastic. Fantastic. And I and I told you that the last time I was here because they're not pulling the wool over your eyes. We know about the traffic. And about uh pe- flow, I mean uh flows. When they were announcing on the over the microphone about uh the number they would call, what happened. The neighbors complaining and they stopped that. So with the volleyball, and don't tell me volleyball players don't make any noise because I play volleyball. No swearing, you don't have to swear, but the it the, you know, the the loudness of it, plus somebody said, you know, about the wind. I worked on the water. The wind was blowing one way. You could hear somebody a quarter of a mile away. So I hope the board takes all this into consideration. Generation, I that they uh they look for the best of Island Park.
Thank you, Mr. Smaller. Anyone else? See none? I'm gonna read some letters. Bear with me. Oh. Okay. Raise your right hand.
Oops. Hold on a second.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Full name and address, please.
Elizabeth Pedro. Fifteen Pearl Street. Okay. I wanna thank the board for allowing us all to speak. That was really great. Um. I didn't wanna speak, but I um a lot of the people have already said what I was gonna say and I I have um I have a long thing here, but I'm gonna paraphrase because um I wanted to give voice to those who aren't a Butters but who are like myself. Island Park people who are gonna be the people that are affected the most by this. Um I've been here for most of my life and um I wanna thank you also for having the video available quickly because I wanted to watch it so that I could check my notes and make sure that my observations were correct. Um I wanna start with the traffic study. People talked about that. Mr. Brayton assessed the traffic on a Wednesday before the summer season kicked off, which you all noticed. He said he determined that you can see both ways when you're coming and going. And that we don't need a traffic study because a hundred cars or less is not enough to warrant one. So not. So not a problem. But as people have said, two weeks later, it's wall-to-wall cars parked on Park Avenue for the free beach. The takeout restaurants are open, which by the way, were not open on that Wednesday. And there are pedestrians walking everywhere. You can barely move down the road because there's bikes, people, car doors in the travel lane. So we're talking about adding like eighty to a hundred more cars into this mix. And I'm so glad that the board pointed out that the traffic pattern is totally different on weekends and even weekdays during the summer. And that this thing is echoing really weirdly. You need to know how busy the road is to begin with before you decide if more traffic is gonna be a problem. And that's a quote, and it's a very important point that I want to come back to. The appraisal person, Mr. Sweeney, when asked by this board what other compatible uses there are in the area cited the beach across the street. Well, the beach across the street is really not a beach, but actually private property that the owners just gave up on. Um, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with the plot map. Anyway, the area is mostly residential. In fact, this is the most densely populated residential area in all of Portsmouth. How compatible are the eight hundred-plus residential homes in Island Park? All may not be a butters, but they still have to deal with the consequences of this facility in their neighborhood. A lot of people wanted to talk about DEM and the history of the site and the regulations being broken and the bud requirements being changed and all that. And I'm not gonna talk about that. I know the board stopped everyone who mentions these things, um. But what I do want to point out is why I believe the residents keep mentioning these things. We know that you can't do anything about them. But the residents want to tell you these things because if this is the pattern, how can they trust any plan going forward? How is this plan gonna be any different? DEM doesn't work during off hours and neither will you when the nuisances start. Even if you try to regulate this, you're not gonna be able to enforce it. Just as this board pointed out during the traffic monologue that you need to know how busy the road is to begin with before you decide if more traffic is gonna be a problem. Then it has to follow that you need to know how many hardships the area has to begin with before you decide if another hardship is gonna be a problem. This board has to consider the hardships that Island Park residents have endured during this operation to consider, to understand if this is gonna be the straw that breaks the camel's back. And there are plenty of other hardships that this board admittedly cannot do anything about, like, you know, the heightened flood insurances, the most costly septic systems in the area, the sixty percent tax increase. I think the residents of Island Park are tired of people who don't live in our neighborhood telling us what they're gonna do to our neighborhood to make it better for our own good. Nobody asked us, and, and you, and you know what? Nobody asked us what we thought when for hours they shut down Park Avenue, the road to our homes for a bike event. Thank you zoning board. Thank you for finally asking us, the residents of Island Park, how we feel. Nobody ever asks us. Finally, someone's asking us. You're asking us. And we're saying enough is enough. The, you know, hardship, inconvenience, traffic, noise. We live here. Everyone else is gonna go home to their own neighborhoods, but this is our neighborhood. We're the ones that have to deal with the consequences of this. When the engineer, Mr. Osgood, was giving us the overview of the plan, he stated that two-thirds of the site will not be developed at this time. If you open this door, we all know what at this time means. At this time. At this time. I don't know if you guys saw this at the planning board meeting. This is a foot in the door. And you're the board that's gonna open or close that door. Are you gonna open this door? Are you willing to jeopardize our neighborhood? I hope not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's read letters. There we go. At least it won't be like the one night when I read like twenty-something. Okay. These are letters and/or emails that came into the board. I'll read them. Here is, this one is addressed to, uh, Aaron Window. Title, Concerns About AP Development of the Island Park Landfill for the June fifteenth zoning meeting, not realizing they're getting carried. Dear Aaron and members of the zoning board, I'm writing to express concerns about the proposed development plan of AP Enterprises to introduce commercial venture into a residential area located on the prior Island Park landfill. I'm unable to attend the meeting on June fifteenth due to being out of the country. I do not feel that the proposed development is in line with the residential character of the area as is involving part residential property and believe that it would have a deeply detrimental effect on the Island Park neighborhood community. These issues include increased motor vehicle traffic to the area that has a high population density of children, increasing risks for accidents and injuries. Two, increased traffic and congestion in residential area which may require police detail to manage for larger events per plan affecting the quality of home living conditions for all residents. And three, potential destruction of existing wildlife habitats along the coastline, particularly in the section one of map below, and she had attached the applicant's, um, radius map. Adversely affecting outdoor recreation for residents of the area. These areas run directly alongside a well-loved waterway that is used for kayaking and paddle boarding and protect a wide range of birds and other wildlife. The proposed development will result in the destruction of large sections of this area, which is truly a special place. My family and many others paddle in these waters and would be very sad to see them destroyed and commercialized. Please help us protect our community. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Warm regards, Jennifer Maiman, PhD. Okay, this letter is dated June sixth, twenty twenty-three, Town of Portsmouth Zoning Board Review regarding AP Enterprises LLC special use permit. Gentlemen, madam, I understand that the zoning board review will be meeting on Thursday, June fifteenth to decide on, on issuing a zoning variance special use permit for AP Enterprises LLC to construct and operate a beach volleyball facility in Island Park. I also understand that there is an organized opposition to this proposal that will be at the meeting and have been advocating against this proposal. Unlike the anticipated vocal opposition that you will be hearing from, I am a resident near Island Park and I'm registering my support for the variance. This property was the site of the old Portsmouth dump, which was closed down in the seventies. The site was left as a dangerous hazardous waste site used for illegal trash dumping and used by dirt, bike enthusiasts. It was not a safe site for the residents in Portsmouth. Since the town of Portsmouth used the site as a dump site, there are some questions to whether the town would have some legal liabilities for any toxic residuals left on the site. AP Enterprises LLC purchased the site many years ago and has invested a considerable amount of time and money to put this land to productive use. The town should be thankful for their investments. Island Park has a long history of being the entertainment section of Portsmouth with beaches, bars, and restaurants. A beach volleyball facility should be a positive addition to this area. Let's not forget that in the nineteen thirties, Island Park had Ferris wheels, dance halls, and roller coasters, which attracted people from, from, or from all over. The town of Portsmouth should be supporting new businesses that will provide job taxes and enjoyment for its residents. We should not be bound to the local pressures of the not in my backyard opposition. I would urge support of a special use permit for AP Enterprises. And that was signed by Grafton Wiley and Lois Clement. Okay, this is from, um, Charles Leveque, uh, James Knott, Chair of the Portsmouth Zoning Board. Regarding AP Enterprises LLC, Dear Chair Knott and members of the Board of Review, as the owner with my family of the abutting property to the south of the petition, I write on behalf of my family to express my support for the above application. I have reviewed the materials and feel the relief requested is reasonable and the minimum required to enjoy the property. Thank you in advance for your kind consideration of this letter. I am available if you have any questions. Sincerely, Charles Leveque. Three more. This is an email, uh, from Laura Hosley to Aaron Lindo and Leah Hitchen. Uh, hello, I realize that it may be late to include this letter for tonight's meeting. If I wasn't away on vacation, I would have attended in person. I want to offer my wholehearted support for beach volleyball in Island Park. I live at fifty Mason Avenue in Portsmouth and would be glad to have this facility practically in my backyard. The sounds of cheering and laughing would make me happy. Volleyball has been part of my fan, my and my family's members' lives for generations. My son and I both play volleyball regularly. September, I will celebrate fifty years of playing competitive and recreational volleyball. I have known Knott Palmer for many decades. He began the Newport Volleyball Club, which has made a vast difference in many people's lives. I trust him in his venture, feeling confident that his heart is in the right place. Volleyball provides opportunities for fun and socialization, especially important for children, teenagers. My career is concentrated on substance abuse prevention. Beach volleyball would certainly be considered a healthy alternative. I will be glad to appear at future meetings to speak. Thank you for your consideration. Laura Hosley. This is another email, um, from, uh, Melissa Disjardins, to Aaron Window, a copy of Leah Hitchen, dear Mr. Knott and members of the board. I apologize for the delay in writing this letter of support. I'm thrilled to see a proposal for this space. I feel it is an acceptable land use and hope it should, hope should it pass, that even more businesses will pop up along Park Avenue with the increase in visitors. I am a nearby neighbor of the site and frequently walk, run along the beach sidewalk and do not see any current traffic or parking issues. As a landscape architect who has practiced for many years in the public realm, I do not, I do have some suggestions that I believe will help ensure the success of the project. Staircase to Park Avenue. The proposal includes a long driveway to walk up and ideally this will also be used by the neighborhood as well. Another means of site access also helps with safety, visibility, and access to businesses those seeking, say, an ice cream cone or after an event. Raised tree planter boxes or some sort of other surface mounted shade structure. Tall evergreen plantings along abutting residential neighbors with solid noise reducing fencing to help alleviate some of the concerns. I also suggest that there could be additional future parking opportunities like angled parking along the wider parts of Park Avenue or Quinac Avenue to help alleviate the parking concerns. Perhaps some of the parking is then metered or requires a resident sticker. Finally, I've heard some opponents wish for this area to remain a quiet place to appreciate the river and do not like the idea of how many visitors this could draw. I live across from one of the many water access points and feel there are opportunities in some of these locations for a couple benches gathering areas for those seeking a less active populated atmosphere. Change is hard, but I feel like this is what will help elevate Island Park to meet its full potential. Thank you for your time and consideration. Warm regards, Melissa Disjardins. And last but not least, this is a, um, from a Mary McDonald, um, to Aaron Lindo, Leah Hitchen. Uh, good morning, Mr. Lindo and Ms. Hitchen. I attended the first two zoning board special use sessions and, but I'm traveling and won't be able to attend tonight's meeting. I would very much appreciate it if you would forward this email to the proper individuals. First, a little about myself. I'm not in a butter, but I have lived nearby at two hundred Cedar Avenue in Island Park for more than sixteen years. I have enjoyed the rather unique community that is Island Park and have more than a casual interest in how the land is used and how that affects the quality of life there. I don't want to bore you by hashing out arguments already made, but I would like to say that I totally agree with the risk, issues raised about noise pollution. We can hear the PHS marching band practice and it's a good bit further away. The impact on traffic and in particular the sloppy way the study was handled by the contractors, traffic expert, as well as other issues raised. And of course, there is air pollution arsenic problem. I do understand that the zoning board has no control over this, but it is important enough to warrant mentioning. I'm writing to ask several questions that I won't be able to ask tonight. First, using the venue, concerts apparently was dropped after the first meeting. Are we sure it won't be added back at some future date? Is it in writing that concerts of any kind won't be allowed in either live nor camp? Second, as mentioned above, I fully understand the arsenic problem is a DEM issue and this board has no authority in that area. My question is, are DEMs meetings open to the public? If so, would attendees be able to speak, ask questions? I will answer that and the answer is yes. In closing, I would like to thank the zoning board for being willing to listen to all concerns and to reconvene several times in order for all to have a say. And thank you to Mr. Lindo and thank you to Mr. Lindo and Ms. Hitchen for help with forwarding this email, Mary McDonald. Okay, those are all the letters we have for the files. That being said, at this time, I am going to ask for a motion to close the hearing to any further testimony.
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to close the petition to have a further testimony. What that means is we will no longer take comment from anyone and the board will now deliberate and make a decision this evening. That being said, uh, we'll take a five-minute recess and we can go over that when we reconvene, okay? All right, so we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Never use that. Zoning Board of Review is back in session. At this point, I will ask any board members if anyone, um, intends to to, um, propose any conditions to be placed on this.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do have some conditions I'd like placed.
Okay, Mr. Feerow, go ahead.
Item one, that garbage cans be provided. Uh, preferably next to your, um, uh, toilet facilities. I figure if you're gonna have to empty toilets anyway, empty garbage cans. If it turns out all of your clients are taking garbage home, you won't have to empty garbage cans. But I've seen on Second Beach and other places, um, on the island where, you know, good people throw garbage bags in the garbage, in the, in the, the trains or just, uh, you know, leave them when they drive away. You find that quite a few places. So first condition is that garbage cans be provided. Second condition is a hundred parking spaces maximum and no parking to be allowed off the gravel, on the grass. This limits the amount of traffic or the, the limits the amount of cars on site and protects the cap from damage caused by automobiles.
Okay, hang on.
Next is regard to construction hours. Um, uh, there's been some comments about midnight deliveries. Uh, we often provide construction hours on, on construction sites.
Can I, can I interrupt you a minute? For those having some like side private conversations, could you just please keep them down because we can hear them up here. It's a little annoying. Thanks. Go ahead.
So nine AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. And no construction will take place or no, yeah, no construction, no deliveries of material will take place outside of those hours. Next is this special use permit is for volleyball only. If the applicant, if successful, if the applicant desires to have sand, um, aerobics or yoga or anything else, they can come back to the zoning board. We can assess the performance to date and then approve or deny alternative, um, or additional uses for the property. And finally, something that I believe is in the, um, operating plan, but I want to reiterate it is there's no amplification of any, any, um, voice or music at all on the site. And that's all I have, sir.
So what was the last one? No?
No amplification, no amplified audio or music.
Okay, good. So, uh, Mr. Feerow is, um, proposing five conditions on this. One, trash cans be provided on site. Second condition, a hundred parking spaces maximum and no parking on the grass areas. Condition number three, that if approved and construction goes forward, that construction must be performed between nine AM and six PM, Monday through Saturday. Condition number four is that. Condition number four is that if approved, special use permit would cover volleyball only and no other use of facility without coming back to the zoning board of review for a modification to the special use permit. And condition number five, that no amplified audio or music be allowed. Good. I have a motion to accept those? Could I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Post. Those conditions will be in place. Are there any other conditions? Okay.
That the facility not operate until eight thirty AM.
I'm sorry. The condition is the, that the facility not operate until eight thirty AM.
Okay.
Seven AM is too early.
So condition number six proposed is that operating, I guess, starting operating hour would be no earlier than eight thirty AM, correct?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Is there any other conditions? Seeing none, time for the board to vote. So as we know, AP Enterprises LLC is before the board. Accessors map twenty and twenty-five lots one, three, thirteen and two. It's commercial and residential are attended facility, requiring a special use permit. The chairman rarely votes first, but in this particular case, the chairman is going to vote first. And you're all gonna have to bear with me because I bear with all of you. And I got a lot of pages to read. First, I want to say this. To me, this has never been about Island Park. It's been about Portsmouth. I know how people in Island Park are. But it's not about Island Park. It's not about Common Fence Point. It's not about Melville. It's not about Newtown for anybody besides a couple of us that even know where Newtown is in town. Okay, it's about Portsmouth. That's what this is about. Okay? I've lived in this town sixty-six years, my entire life. I've seen differences in Island Park and other areas of town. Part of the reason I get on this board was because I got tired of sitting back there and watching stuff happen and decided that if I was gonna do anything in this town, I would try to at least have some sort of say in how the town was developed. Here I am seventeen, eighteen years later. Anyway. Petition was first heard by the board. It's regularly scheduled meeting on July twentieth, subsequent meetings on September twenty-seventh and again tonight. During the first hearing on July twentieth, there was some confusion during the initial presentation by the applicant's representative. Specifically, that what was being presented verbally was different than the plans the board had received as part of the petition application. When questioned, the applicant's representative confirmed that the site plan from the board was the original and the applicant's testimony was based on revised plan the board had yet to receive for review. The same held true for the traffic report. Board member Furell questioned if it was required that the applicant request an amendment to the petition, given the change in what was initially applied for and advertised for. No request for an amendment was made by the applicant. At all, ever. I went back through everything. However, the board did allow the petition to continue, assuming we accepted the change. But for the record, there never was a request to accept the modified petition. There was much discussion on the number of players that would be using the court at any given time. Much focus was placed by the applicant on scenarios of two versus two, four versus four, playing simultaneously. However, when questioned by the board, Mr. Palmer stated that AP Enterprises would only rent the courts, not actually control them. Anyone renting a court could run whatever format they want, i.e. two by two, four by four, six V six. The last format of six V six gives a potential of a hundred fifty-six players. The applicant's response was the board could impose a condition limiting the number of players to a hundred and four, which is the four V four format. Placing a condition on the number of players still leaves the door open for any additional people to attend, such as spectators and referees. A true volleyball tournament, if it's a tournament, and I played volleyball for thirty years, I only quit three years ago because I got injured. I've played in Yankee tournaments when I was in my better days. Okay, so I'm familiar with volleyball, although soccer's my true love. If it's a true volleyball tournament and if it's true sand court or beach volleyball tournament, it's gonna have a minimum of additional two referees. A high referee and a down referee. Let alone if it's a very high level one, they'll also have two lines people. Just referees alone would add another twenty-six people there, but none of this was added in. So a hundred and four potentially could become a hundred and thirty in a heartbeat. Let alone spectators. Yes, there's not a lot of spectators at a volleyball match, but there are spectators. One of the people that spoke out, I've got his name here, which was, he was at the last meeting, Mr. Barr. Mr. Barr gave testimony he played and that his wife loved to come and some friends would always came and support him. Not a lot, but they would come. That all adds to traffic. Things I didn't take into consideration when drafting my decision. Any issues relating to the process of capping the landfill, other than its current condition and what impact that may have on the application. Anything under the jurisdiction of the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management that the zoning board of review has no oversight or control of. Use of alcohol on the premises. There's probably more alcohol consumed on the beaches down there than they are at a volleyball thing. Believe me. And I had to put this out there. There was a statement by one party that if this was allowed, it would attract a higher number of sex offenders. I could find no evidence whatsoever that the participants who play volleyball or the playing of volleyball attract sex offenders, thereby putting the community at risk. Okay, that was about as far fetched as I think I've ever heard on this board. But the items that we have to consider are what we call the A through J criteria. And I will take each one individually. A, the desired use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. There's no evidence that the playing of volleyball would be detrimental to the surrounding area. So I find this proposal meets this section of special use permit criteria. Section B, it will be compatible with neighboring land uses. So the majority of the area directly abutting the proposed site to the east is residential with two small seasonal food providers that have window service only. To the west is Wetlands, then another residential, residential neighborhood. To the south is a stretch of beach abutting the Skonit River and to the north is Wetlands. When the applicant's real estate appraiser, Mr. Thomas Sweeney, was asked to specify exactly what uses in the area he considered compatible to this proposal, his response was the beach across the street. A beach is passive recreational, similar to a hiking trail. It does not require any sort of additional infrastructure or equipment to be used and enjoyed. On the contrary, a playground with normal playground equipment like swing sets, basketball courts, jungle gyms are not considered passive. However, most are free and open to the public. This proposed facility is a larger scale for-profit commercial recreational facility that is not passive and only open to those that pay a fee. I find this proposal does not meet this section of the special use criteria. It is not compatible. C, it will not create a nuisance or a hazard in the neighborhood. This site in its present state is still considered to be a hazard. Evidence of perimeter fencing that is falling over and is in disrepair, along with a broken lock in the entrance to the gate, has a potential to allow any curious person, teenager, child, et cetera, to access the site, which the final closing of the previous landfill has yet to be completed, including the final grading, shaping, and vegetative planning. Simply see the DEM letter dated September first, twenty twenty-three. As stated a little earlier, there are sections of the perimeter fence and they're in disrepair, sediment has overwhelmed silt fences and so on. All that surely could have and should have been maintained for the safety of the public and surrounding environment. No testimony was presented that addressed even the repair of the perimeter fence. Although difficult to determine if this proposal will create a nuisance or hazard in the neighborhood, sometimes past behavior is a good indicator of future behavior. And I seriously question that if this proposal were to be approved, that all future focus and efforts would be directed simply towards the proposed developed area, leaving the undeveloped area to remain in its current condition or in the future fall back into its current unsafe condition if it were to be approved. Also, due to the lack of any landscaping plan, any dust or dirt from the site could continue to blow towards the neighboring properties. I find this proposal does not meet this section of the special use permit criteria. Section D, adequate protection is afforded to the surrounding property by the use of open space and planting. The applicant provided absolutely no landscaping plan whatsoever that directly addressed abutting properties. The board could have placed a condition that the applicant had to plant some sort of screening along the eastern boundaries such as large arborvitae that would have assisted in reducing any dust and noise, et cetera. However, placing conditions should only be opposed when absolutely necessary, not because the applicant failed to present an application that fully addressed the requirements of a special use permit. Also, there was no testimony or evidence provided that dealt with the area north of the proposed volleyball site that is currently dirt. Presently, dirt and dry spells, dust and dirt from the site blow towards the neighboring properties, disent according to testimony from the butters. I find the proposal does not meet this section of special use criteria. Safe vehicular access and adequate parking are provided. This stretch of Park Avenue was one of the busiest streets in the town of Portsmouth during the summer months, and any increase in traffic will certainly have an impact. When questioned about what the current level of services on Park Avenue, the applicant's traffic expert simply responded, he didn't know. One questioned, well, what would it be if the petition were allowed? He again responded, he didn't know. Other than a trip generation report, no traffic study was presented to the board. Reasoning presented was that the estimated number of trips the site would generate was below the threshold that the Rhode Island Department of Transportation mandates for a full traffic study to be performed. That may be what RIDOT requires. We're not RIDOT. We require things like this. The lack of a traffic study that would show the impact this petition would have on Park Avenue, I believe is necessary in order to make an informed decision on any negative impact to vehicular access. Also, I find the trip generation port, report submitted is flawed. It's based on a number of trips or based on the number of players. That assumption is based on the fact the applicant was assuming the board would place a condition on the maximum, maximum number of players allowed at any one time. And that was stated multiple times during the hearings, but no condition was placed. So the number of players on the site is unknown, resulting in a trip generation report that was generated with false data. How can you generate a trip report if you don't know how many people there are? The report also does not take into consideration any spectators or officials in a tournament situation as far as adequate parking is concerned. Again, the proposed parking plan is based on assumed number of players, as pointed out previously. I find the proposal does not meet this section of the special use permit criteria. Noise, control of noise, smoke, odors, lighting, and any other objectionable feature. Noise. In the letter dated July tenth, twenty twenty-three, from the applicant's attorney to Mr. Aaron Lindo of the town of Portsmouth, specifically item number five, the applicant states that, quote, "No sound amplifying that creates a noise disturbance will be used unless pursuant to a noise variance from the town council." In the revised operating plan submitted to the board, the applicant states, "Some events require the ability to communicate to players via a public address system." These events may also use background music. To me, this implies that amplified noise is totally, not totally out of the question. That was, however, taken care of tonight by the condition placed by Mr. Furell. The applicant also stated that there is an exception in the Town of Portsmouth Noise Ordinance two five seven dash five, under exceptions, two five seven dash five D, which states "The unamplified voice except those activities controlled by two fifty seven dash nine." Basically, that means that the noise ordinance, you can't take into consideration unamplified human voice. Except, and this wasn't part of it, I looked it up, except as controlled by two fifty seven dash nine. In section two fifty seven dash nine D, there's a term called revelry. Revelry is when a person, let me read how the whole thing. Revelry, no person shall yell, shout, hoot, whistle, sing, make or cause to be made any noise on the public streets between the hours of ten PM and seven AM of the following day or at any other time or place so as to annoy or disturb the quiet comfort or repose of any person in any hospital, dwelling, hotel, or other type of residence. Revelry is generally considered to be people that are lively partying and noisy at festival parties, et cetera. However, yelling and cheering on players or teams on sporting events also can be considered revelry. So it's my opinion that that counts in this case. As I stated earlier, the prevailing winds during this last, during the late spring and summer come south, southwest. Again, having personally played volleyball for over thirty years, I can't say it's a quiet sport. There is a lot of yelling and cheering and rooting each other on, and if it's a tournament, there are as well. But any noise generated in the south is gonna impact the neighboring properties and that's just exacerbated by the wind. Trash. The current proposal regarding trashing, carry in, carry out, there were no trash receptacles even considered up until Mr. Furell proposed having at least trash cans. Would have been nice if we had taken a step sooner and, and put a dumpster there so they could empty the trash cans because, you know. But any loose trash that's not put in trash cans is gonna go south, southwest. Wind is gonna blow it towards the butters. I find the proposal does not meet this section of the special use permit criteria. Solar rights of the butters are provided for. This petition will have no impact on the solar rights of the butters, so I find the proposal does meet the criteria of this section of special use permit. The proposed special use will be in conformance with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan in the zoning ordinance of the town of Portsmouth. In table two point three of the Town of Portsmouth Comprehensive Community Plan, the plan shows the current number of town-owned volleyball courts at two, with an estimated need and future need for six. That would leave a need for four additional courts. Nowhere in section two point four, titled Goals, Policies, and Implementation, does the plan mention the promotion, the development, or creation of any for-profit facilities to address the recreational needs of the town of Portsmouth. The proposed facility is available only to those that can afford to pay a fee to play and is open to anyone from anywhere, not just town residents. I find that this proposal is not what was intended in the Comprehensive Community Plan and therefore does not meet this section of the special use permit criteria. Health, safety, and welfare of the community are provided. At minimum, not having a full traffic study or a landscaping plan that addresses the protection of the surrounding properties, one cannot make a valid judgment on the impact of health, safety, and welfare of the community. So I find the proposal does not meet this section of the special use permit. Section J, last one. It's consistent with the purpose of design standards as set forth in Article nine, Section D, and for developments within the Town Center District. This section is not applicable to this petition. So in conclusion, my vote is to deny the petition based on it does not meet the special use criteria for the Town of Portsmouth zoning ordinance. Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve the special use permit. This, my decision is based on the testimony given and the artifacts provided to this board. And with your permission, sir, I'd like to go through the special use criteria identified in Article seven, Section eight-point-five, A through J.
Okay.
Item A, the desired use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. In my opinion, most of this question is answered by the following questions. Is, is a use detrimental to the area? What I can stay, say at this time, I am absolutely certain that a capped, secured DEM inspected and monitored site is better, is less of a detriment than what we have now, or what we've had for decades, which is a, a open, unregulated, uncontrolled pit of whatever people dumped in there over the years. Item B, it will be compatible with neighboring land uses. This site is zoned a combination of, um, commercial and residential, and is going to be, and is proposed to be used as a recreation site. I believe it is compatible with, with neighboring land uses, evidenced by there being a beach across the street that's used for recreation, and a park nearby, and other parks within that, that community of Portsmouth. It will not create a nuisance or a hazard in the neighborhood. I'm assessing this when the facility is complete. And you may be aware that when a special use permit is granted, the applicant has a year to complete whatever it is they're going to do. Otherwise, they have to come back here for a renewal, and they're only allowed a couple of renewals. So when this is complete, I do not believe it will create a nuisance or a hazard in the neighborhood. The, the condition of the site puts homes at a minimum one hundred and fifty feet away from the courts, and the use of grading, fencing, and the vegetation bordering the site, I believe, oh, or and the limited hours of operation, I believe limits its nuisance value, and captain-controlled, I do not believe it's a hazard to the neighborhood. Adequate protection is afforded to the surrounding property by the use of open space and lighting. The surrounding property is protected by open space, fencing, and grading. So I believe this condition is met. Safe vehicular access and adequate parking are provided. Safe vehicular access is provided. The access point on the Park Avenue is not close to any other curb cuts along Park Avenue. Sightlines are good, and access to East Main Road or Route twenty-four are within about a mile. You come out, make a left turn, I'm sorry, make a right turn, and then you're either heading up to East Main Road or up Boyd's Lane up to Route twenty-four. If, um, users of the site want to put some money into Portsmouth, then they can turn in the other direction and join all the other folks who are going, visiting our restaurants and shops along Park Avenue. Parking is provided for a hundred cars. If we assume that on average, a car is going to have a person and a fraction, that gives us somewhere around one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and seventy-five people on site. The thirteen courts operating in a four-by-four configuration require one hundred and four, or cause one hundred and four people. Well within even the low end, one hundred and twenty-five. Add some spectators, add some additional staffing, running referees, things like that. You're still within the, uh, the, a reasonable limit that a hundred cars can approach, can accommodate. Players and spectators are going to arrive and depart, not at the same time. This isn't like a, a concert venue or a big sporting venue where at the end of the game or the end of the concert, everybody rushes for the exits. Games will start and stop, I'd use the term asynchronously. They're going to start and stop when they need to start and stop. And so I would expect a, a, um, continual flow of traffic in and out of the site. Most of that traffic turning right and then heading elsewhere on the island or, um, over onto Route twenty-four. Portsmouth Fire Department has also confirmed that there's safe emergency access onto the site, so that, that adds to the safe vehicular traffic. Controlled a noise, smoke, odors, lighting, and any other objectionable features is provided. The site will not generate smoke, odors, or lighting, since it's only going to operate during the day and it doesn't have electricity. The sound is going to be people playing sand volleyball. And because this is a number of individual courts, I would expect when something happens on a court that makes people happy, even in a four-by-four situation, you're going to have four people saying, hooray, high five. Plus whatever spectator is there. And folks will be able to hear this off-site. I live about a mile, almost two miles from Portsmouth High School, and I can hear the band. I can also hear fire trucks. And, um, frankly, I don't consider that to be noise pollution. I consider that to just be, that's what happens when you live in a town. You hear people going about their lives, and in this case, playing and having fun. So, so having these courts one hundred and fifty feet from homes, separated by the berm, or separated by the fence and being high up, sound, sound radiates out and travels in a straight line. So having homes below that, that grade will help attenuate the sound. You're still going to hear it, but you, you know, you're also going to hear people driving on, on Park Avenue. You're going to hear people playing on, on, um, um, playgrounds. I think we have to be careful that we don't set the bar too high for anyone in town, because I don't believe there's a business on Park Avenue that has sufficient off-street parking to meet their maximum capacity or generates zero noise. Solar rights of the butters are provided for. That's not applicable. Solar rights to a butters is not affected by this. Item H, the proposed special use will be in conformance with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan. Introduction of recreational facilities is compatible with the intent of our comprehensive plan. Although this site is privately owned, I can look at that as a negative, or in fact, I can look at it as a positive, as a potential place where the town could go for recreation at a much cheaper, at a much lower cost to the town than buying property and building up our own facility, our own public facility.
Yeah, okay.
I'm almost done. The health, safety, and welfare of the community are protected. The site as proposed improves health, safety, and welfare. And, and the reason I say this is, which may be an unpopular idea, but DEM is tasked with, with confirming that what right now is a hazardous waste dump is mitigated. And so capping it is going to be better than having it uncapped. And last, um, uh, is it consistent with the purpose of design standards set forth in Article nine, um, relative to the town center? That's not applicable in this case. So, Mr. Chairman, in summary, I vote to approve this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Horowitz.
I vote to deny this application, and a lot of it had to do with, when, when I sat down and thought, okay, what are my feelings on this? I thought, okay, the first thing is the conditions of the special use permit, which I'm not going to go through again, because Mr. Knott described it so clearly. But what struck me was Section A, General Conditions of Special Use Permits, um, item two, where it says, "Each application for a special use permit shall be evaluated as to its probable effect on the adjacent property, the neighborhood, and on the community, and may be approved or denied as the findings indicate appropriate." And in all, I haven't been on the zoning board for very long, but I've never seen this kind of community, um, objection to a application. Um, and the few people who did support it, most of them were volleyball players. Most of them were from out of the area, so they wouldn't be, um, affected day to day. Um, and I think there were only two local people who actually supported it. I may be wrong, there may have been a few more. I, I don't know where all those voices are. But I think the vast majority of people living in the community objected to it, and I think that's where, what we have to respect. So I vote to deny.
Make sure Helen gets that. Okay. Mr. Donovan.
I'm also going to vote to deny, although I have more.
Let him finish, please.
I have more positives regarding some of the, uh, individual things. For example, as Mr. Furell pointed out, most people aren't going to be turning left. They're going to be turning right. If they went on Boyd Avenue, they're going to go up to East Main Road. So there may be, I'm sorry, I'm not talking to the microphone. Most people, I don't have as much rejection to the traffic situation. It, everybody's not going to be coming or leaving at the same time. That's true. And also, most of the people are going to be going right, unless they live in Island Park or Common Fence Point. They're going to be going East Main Road, right up the, uh, street, or they're going to be going Boyd's Lane, which happened very quickly. But I don't see that as being much of an issue. And although it may be very, very quiet in Island Park, where I live is not extremely quiet. I live enough, um, off of West Main Road. It's way into the back. Route twenty-four is in back me, the high schools across the, uh, across the way. Most of that noise just really becomes background noise. Well, I hear the football games, especially Pop Warner games on the Sundays. I hear the band practicing, and full disclosure, my youngest one was in the band. I'm quite proud of the Portsmouth band. Um, but so those type of things, I don't think are the biggest issues. I know the noise that's being generated by people, you know, clapping and things of that nature are going to be a, a problem. Also, I think in terms of the health of the community, anybody from the community who is going to be engaged in it, for example, you know, children, we have, I know we have a girls volleyball team. I don't know if we have a boys volleyball team at the high school. Uh, and if they, um, and some of them are going to be, uh, able to play, and, and young people are going to be able to play on it, on it too, and anywhere you go, there's just not enough for young people to do, and I think we can add to that. Uh, but I feel in this case the negatives outweigh the positives of that, of that type. So I vote to deny.
Thank you. So in summary, the petition has been denied. Okay, I want to thank everyone in attendance and everybody who's remote for your patience, consideration through this whole thing. It was nice to have a hearing this contentious that was sort of subdued. Believe me, I've been amongst a lot of them that aren't that way, so. But to the people of Island Park, make no mistake, something will probably go there someday. This application may come back here someday. I mean, the applicant has the right to take this to Superior Court to get our decision overturned if they want. Um, they could come back to the board with a different proposal. It could happen, so. I just want everyone to know that. So if something comes along, you're not saying, oh, what happened? So. It's been denied. Um, could I have a motion to, uh, adjourn? I move, I make a motion to adjourn the zoning board? Which has been made in second to, uh, adjourn, all in favor. Hi.